Six thirty and we'll call the meeting to order.
Pledge of诫.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I will entertain a motion to approve the agenda as written.
I move we approve the agenda as written.
All in favor or any discussion? All in favor, approve the agenda as written. If I may say a hi.
Hi.
Alright, agenda is approved. Alright, we'll move right in to the student board member vote of office. And I think we just have one tonight.
Can I have Cameron come on down? Hi Cameron, hi. I solemnly swear, I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution laws of the state of Washington and that I will faithfully and impartially perform and discharge the duties of the Office of Student Board Member, North Mason School District Board Directors.
Of the Office of Student Board Member.
North Mason School District.
Northern Mason School District Board Directors.
According to the law, to the best of my ability.
According to the law, to the best of my ability.
Wonderful. I'm happy to sign this. Welcome.
Alright. Hayden Thomas was not available tonight, so we will put that on next. So moving on to public comments.
First, I'd like to apologize because I'm extremely loud. I can't hear and I don't wear my hearing aids because I work with children all day. And as you know, that'll, but, and this is my first time doing this and I'm extremely nervous. First, I'd like to say that I brought my daughter into North Mason and she's been going here since she was in Christ Lutheran. So she's been a big part of your community and is going to continue to be a big part of your community. And there's a few things I would like to say about, some things. First of all, Skyward, when I went to my parent teacher conference this time, I know my child misses a lot of school. She, I don't want to make excuses for her, but it's hard to get her out of bed, but she's a good student, she makes good grades, and when she's here, she's, she's quite fun to be around, to be honest with you. But when I went, go to parent teacher conferences, what I heard was, Samantha, did you turn that in? Oh, I have not just graded it. So I don't understand that because, and I heard that all through high school because if they're not, if the teachers aren't doing, aren't grading it, and I'm screaming at home, I'm throwing a fit at home because she's not doing her schoolwork, where is that, where is that fair to Samantha? You know, the Skyward thing's off the hook. Then the, and I, and I don't understand the trimester and the semester thing that just happened because these children, these, these young adults have came from COVID where I stood, I, when COVID was over, I stood in front of a store with two of them and they were afraid to go in the store. That's how it affected, COVID affected them. And I'm the outgoing mom that took those kids everywhere. And I love you. And, and I need you to know that changing, what I, are you the new superintendent by the way? When I asked why you did that, they told me because you were, I had teachers tell me that you were from Idaho, not her teachers, you were from Idaho, and that's what they do there. So that's why you made the decision to do that. But it's very confusing to me as a mom, why, why everything's going on like that because now she doesn't have band and that is her elected, that, that, that may not be her. She wants avid, which I don't think that, that class entails too much for her, but band gives her, for me, watching from the outside looking in, it gives her a lot more light, you know what I mean? So now that's going to be wiped away and going into her senior year, and that really bothers me. I'm really sorry. And the band teacher told, the first thing he said, and I really, I really respect this man, and I like this man, he's always been really good, but at the parent teacher conference, he told me, he said, Samantha, you're not going to do nothing with music anyway. So at that point, after I found out that everything changed from trimesters to semesters, I knew then that these teachers knew something I didn't know, and nobody's talked to me about it. And my child wants to work with children, which I wish she didn't, but if you saw her with small children, you would know that God has given her a blessing, and so that's the way it's going to be. I'm really sorry. I don't, I should have wrote things down, but I was working when I found out all this was going on. And I don't, I don't really know what to say except that right now, and I'm really sorry about who I am and the way I talk, but.
You're doing a good job.
You know, I just want to fight for the kids' rights because it's, it's changed all their lives and I don't want my kid pushed through. I make her earn her grades, even though when I thought something was wrong with her, so I had her tested and she's taught, she tested out in the top eight percent in our nation. So we know she's smart, she's bored, you know, or she's lazy, that could possibly be the thing too, you know? But I just don't know how all that's going to affect, you know what I mean? And we had a tragedy in our life last year where she, and I don't want to use that, but she lost her dad. And so I'm trying to fix all this and I need all of your help because I was told, I always thought that as a community, if we raise our children together, that that, they would all turn out, they're all going to be okay, but it's not happening that way, and it's sad for me to see that, you know? And I'm going to go now and I'm sorry.
No, you're fine. Did you write your phone number down?
I did not.
I'm happy to give you a call.
I would love you to give me a call and kind of talk to me by myself. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Yeah, follow up with that, please. Okay, alright. Student Board Member comments, let's go there. What's going on?
I don't think there's much going on lately. I've heard people are definitely have a lot of mixed reactions about the new trimester and semester schedule, especially incoming freshmen have heard a lot about that, so there's a lot of discussion, I think. Um, that's really all I've been hearing lately, his discussion about that and how are students going to, you know, make up classes if they fail them. So there's been a lot of discussion about that, but there's been talk about, you know, having more meetings with students to really like get their opinions and like what could we do going forward, but that's pretty much all I've heard. Winter sports season starting?
I was just going to say that because there's, there's finals week, there's, I think it's this week or.
Yeah, today and tomorrow.
There's finals weekend with like the transition of trimesters is the same with sports. So now it's, there's wrestling, girls, boys, basketball, boys and girls wrestling, bowling, I think that's it. Those are our winter sports and they just started practice, I think, last week.
Yep, boys basketball, the first game is the second, do you know what wrestling is?
Um, the wrestling, we have actually our first home mixer, December fourth. And then again, I know within like the, a lot of the people that play sports, there's been kind of questions about how like sports are going to work around the new like semester kind of schedule, which, yeah, I'm sure a lot of people have questioned.
Any feedback on the cell phone policy?
Oh, yeah, a lot of feedback on the cell phone policy. A lot of students are against it, obviously. I don't think that kids these days really want to have to give up their phones during class time, but honestly, I've heard more positive reactions than I thought I would, especially from freshmen, honestly. Because I think, I don't know what the policy was in, at Hawkins, was it similar? Was there a cell phone policy at Hawkins?
I have to look like that, but just, I'm still new enough that I, I believe that there was. I can't state how it was different from last year, though.
Okay, well, I think that's why a lot of the freshmen might be more compliant with it, but I think people like it. Especially since it's different from other schools where other schools just like walk up your phone for the whole day, they like how you can have it during past periods and lunches. So that's what I've heard.
Um, I've noticed a lot of it, like opinions being posted on, posted on social media, and I definitely have noticed a difference between the lower classmen and the upper classmen, and the lower classmen seem to be more open minded and absorbent of the idea, and then the upper classmen are kind of a little more, like, just kind of know, you know, they're almost done with high school, like they're a little more like off about it. There's been, I've seen some like stores and some posts on Instagram about like trying to do something to change it, but, yeah.
I think it'll be good, I think it'll be beneficial. I already know there's a lot of classrooms who are switching back to writing only on paper, and then you're not allowed to have your phone for the entirety of class, you're only allowed to use your computer and you have to be monitored so that kids don't use AI to write their essays, so. And I think that's a lot of freshman classes, so that might correlate to why underclassmen are more with the idea.
Very good.
Thank you, ladies.
Thank you, alright. Moving on to the consent agenda, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as written.
I move we approve the consent agenda as written.
Alright, any discussion? Alright, alright, all in favor of approving the consent agenda as written? Signify by saying aye, student board members first.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye as well, that passes. So moving on to board development and linkage, superintendent update.
So I wanted to share that about four forty-seven this evening, the Mason County Board of Elections did certify the election and the school tax issue did fail by eighteen votes. The final yes vote was two thousand six hundred and seventy-nine, the noes were two thousand six hundred and ninety-seven, so very, very close. So obviously, we as a group will have some hard decisions that will have to be made as well as some hard work to make sure that we can get the support of the community going forward in the future. What else did I want to share? I wanted to share that the application for being a community ambassador will be shared out the first week of December. We're looking to have a cohort of adults that would come once a month and learn about different parts of the school, whether it be special education or financing, and so we're looking forward to having that application be out and hopefully then starting to meet right after the new year. We had a nice little turnout for the first soup with the soup. The culinary students did an amazing job with the butternut squash soup that they had made, very nice conversation, and then this month, well, it's not December, December, rather than soup, I'm doing coffee and cookies with the superintendent, so that'll be a morning opportunity on December seventeenth, and we'll get that out there in social media and all of our different outlets where we share information. In the meantime, I'll be helping the Kiwanis serve coffee and hot chocolate at the tree lighting on Sunday, so if there's community members who want to share feedback or touch base with me, I would welcome that conversation with them. I enjoyed having Cameron, Sophia, and Hayden stop by and we had some conversations about some work that we can do together going forward, brainstorming how we can get student feedback from West Sound Tech as well as James Taylor. And we're going to have lunch together Friday after Thanksgiving and also talk about how we can better share the information about how the change to semesters from trimesters will definitely be a transition, but will provide thirty-nine additional hours for each of the, the subjects that the students have. So there will need to be obviously some conversations about sports as well regarding that. I'm guessing that you're referring to like eligibility maybe, or we probably don't even know which realm within sports you're talking about, but we'll get some more feedback in that area as well. Yeah, the, the lead community, the community group for the levy, had a post levy meeting to kind of debrief the, the loss of the election when it was still losing by thirty-four votes. The committee is looking to meet monthly and looking to have ways that they can continue to support the school even when there's not a tax initiative before the, before the voters. And besides that, we've got a great teaching and learning update with our principals and our directors regarding discipline and behavior. Yeah, I hope that everybody has a wonderful and relaxing holiday with their family. This is a short week, students get dismissed half day on Wednesday, and it's hard to believe it's the end of November already.
I know, just moving along. Well, very good. So moving on to that presentation. Who do we have up? Is that Chris? Get up here, Chris.
Hi, good evening. I'm Chris Turner, Director of Systems and Supports, and I'm happy to be in front of you today. Every year about this time, we give a update on how we are doing discipline wise, and so we're going to share some statistics with you, and the building's going to share some stuff with you that they're doing within their buildings, and hopefully you guys walk out of here more informed than you are when you walked in. So if we go to the next slide, Jackie, please. These are our OSPI district suspension rates. OSPI only monitors out of school suspensions, so that's what you're seeing. So in-school suspension is not covered in here and other disciplinary things that we have are not covered. I put two years in here, so you can see the twenty-four, twenty, the twenty-three, twenty-four, and then last year, twenty-four, twenty-five. The blue is two years ago, orange is last year, so you can see the rates. That tiny little green line that you see on each one of those, that's the twenty-three, twenty-four state average. So you can see how we compare to the states on each one of those, but theirs is back on twenty-three, twenty-four because they have not, we don't have the statistics for twenty-four, twenty-five for the state. If we go to the next slide, this one you can look at our suspension rates by race. The state gives us many more races, but our N count, basically our number is so low is, it, one, one person makes such a huge difference, so I removed those. These are the populations that are large enough that they're significant. So you can again compare on the race, twenty-three, twenty-four compared to twenty-four, twenty-five, and that's the percent of that population. So if we're looking at twenty-four, twenty-five of our white students, it's about six point two percent or something along that line. If you look at the, no, let's go back, please, Jackie. The one on the right is suspension rates by gender. The block on the left is twenty-three, twenty-four, the blocks on the right is twenty-four, twenty-five, and you can see males versus females. This reflects usually discipline across the state. Boys are usually disciplined at a higher rate, but now you can see what ours is. It's something that all schools worked, worked to get through, and we're continuing to do that as well. But there's our rates. Move on to the next one. And this is our discipline rates by program. So you can see like our EL students, English language learners compared to non-English language learners. And if I just take that first little two stats there, you can see they're mighty close, and that's really what we want to see. We don't want to see a huge difference between those that are EL and those that are not, or the homeless versus non-homeless. You want to see those very consistent. The ones that are, I want to highlight that we are currently working on and we are very aware of is our section five oh four. Those are kids with disabilities, and then the one that says disabilities, those are our special education kids. Our discipline rates for those are too high. They're out of, they're out of whack with our non-disabled kids, and every building is aware of that, and that's something that's in their SIP plans and that they're working on to adjust, and I think they're so far seeming to do a good job. Okay, we go on to the next rate. So last year, we told you that we were working on revamping our discipline system. It's in place now, buildings are doing it very effectively, so we had to realign all of our codes. So our, our old discipline codes were not aligned with the state codes very well. We created new discipline codes and they're aligned exactly how they're supposed to be aligned now. We changed from using major and minors, which was a kind of, a minor was kind of what happened in a classroom, a major is something that needed administrator involvement. We moved it to three different categories. One is teacher managed, that's what teachers manage in the classroom. Admin supported, basically that means kid stays in the classroom, but there's a write-up where the principal will support, probably do some discipline. And then there's admin managed, that means the kid's behavior is such that the kid cannot stay in class. And so there's three different levels. One of the bonuses with this is, and it's a few bullets down, is teacher managed. With this, we can really break down what's happening in the classroom, know the behaviors that are in the classroom, and be able to support teachers with that because it's really differentiated in those three levels. We've also been able to align our discipline all across from elementary to middle school to high school. So the assistant principals did a lot of work in lining up what should the consequence be if kids do this? How should it progress from, you know, K through five, through eight, and through twelve? So those things are aligned and they're going to be consistent. So, you know, one administrator will give the same consequences as another within the same building because we have a process to make sure that that happens. In every building, we're going to continue to do positive, positive behavior support systems, and that's the stuff that's, we align it to make sure that we are recognizing when kids do good things. We're outlining exactly how we want them to behave and saying, this is what we're looking for, and then we recognize it. PBIS is best practice from the state, and it's also shown that when you implement it with fidelity, it reduces discipline rates, and it also increases our academic scores. Each building, twice a year, they do a TFI, it's a tiered fidelity inventory, where they're saying, how are we doing? It's kind of a self-assessment. And so within the building, their built team does a self-assessment, say, here's areas that we're doing good, here's how we can improve because it's a constant process to improve. When it's being implemented well, you will see a lowering of behavior and consequently up go your academics, okay? PBIS does take a commitment from a building and a true deep understanding of how it is and what it does and how it works. A lot of people can say PBIS, not a lot of people really implement it well, and we're getting good at it. Next is alternate forms of discipline. This is something that we're always working on. What do we do instead of suspending kids? And we have detentions and stuff like that, but we're trying to figure out what more can we do? So like if a student happens to use tobacco in school, currently we suspend them. What else could we do instead of suspending them where they may learn? Because discipline is about learning, it's not about punishing. So that's constantly what we're doing, we're looking at it and deciding what can we do within the buildings. Conversation I have with the secondary teachers, it's a conversation that Kyle has with elementary principals. And the last bullet on here is continuum of education. Anytime a student's suspended, we're required to make sure that they continue getting their education. They don't just go home and we forget about them. And so it's part of our process that we ensure that that happens, and each building's going to talk about what they do to get that to happen. So if we go to the next slide. So through the presentations, these are the things that you should be looking for, okay? Every building's going to share their data, their highlights, important things that are going on. They're going to talk to you about last year's behavior goal and whether they hit it and they didn't. They're going to share specific strategies they're doing within their building, and if they're doing new things, or they're staying the course of where they were, right? That's, and that's super important to know. They're going to share how they're trying to do alternate forms of discipline and the steps that they take to ensure their kids are continuing to get their education passed it. We don't just say, hey, it's on teams and let them go, right? We do more than that. And then they'll share some data that they look at monthly with their built teams to help improve our disciplinary process. So James Taylor's the exception to that. Their discipline is so low that we're taking the opportunity to explain other things about James Taylor and how it works and how we're progressing in that building, but it's, so it's more than just discipline, and our principal will talk about that when that comes up. So there we go. Now it's time for the principals to share. We're going to change the order that we normally have and start with North Mason High School.
Good evening, board. My name's Chad Collins, I'm principal in North Mason High School, and with me I have Steve Hackett, he's our assistant principal, and he oversees our discipline in our building. So I am going to turn the presentation over to him. Here you go, Steve Hackett.
Thanks, Chad. Alright, okay, before we start, I mean, the order's changed a little bit, so the high school's first. I tried not to throw any acronyms in there because I know we do a bunch of ed talk and it's things we say every single day. If I did get some acronym in there and you say, what the heck, just stop me and yell at me and I'll go over it, don't sit there confused. Sorry if I did, but we, we have some words that we always use, but I want to make sure it's crystal clear for everybody else, so don't hesitate to yell at me if we need to stop. Uh, our first slide, I'll have to look at this one, talks about, the first part is just to tell our story, and it really started last spring when we saw that our biggest discipline issue was skipping, students not going to class. And the difference for skipping, just so we kind of understand, tardy is if you're zero to ten minutes late to class. Truant is if you're ten minutes later to class, and then skipping means you just flat out, didn't go at all. And so we're seeing, we saw a big charge in skipping last spring, and so our, our built team, our building leadership team, they kind of worked together and they said, well, we got some ideas of stuff we can do, and we saw some improvement, and then when we met this year in August, our built team, they really took it on and they really wanted to have teachers have some, some bigger roles in this, and they understood, hey, it's not going to happen with Chad and Steve just pushing kids around in the hall, we need everybody in on this. And their planning time is a hundred percent their directed time, we can't ask them anything during planning time, but the teachers made their own little committee, and they called it the climate committee, and they said, hey, we're not going to tell you you have to, but if you want to volunteer to be on this committee, here we go. And I'm going to give up some of my planning time, and all they do is go walk around the halls. Hey, where are you supposed to be? Where are you? And they push around the bathrooms to make sure people aren't just hanging out in places they're not supposed to hang out. Uh, and if they, they see kids, they call and let us know, and we figure out what's going on. It's been awesome to see, and they really took it on, and, you know, we kind of joked earlier, we're going to deputize some of them because they were really into like making their schedules, but they, they've seen great improvement from this, and it's just everyone working together. So I want to like honor those teachers in this part, for sure. If you look at the slides there, so the top one obviously is this year and last year. So at this same time last year, we had a hundred and thirty-seven referrals written for kids skipping. We're down to eighty-one, and that's an improvement of fifty-six in one trimester, so that's a huge chunk just off of skipping. Tardy is even bigger, we had a hundred and forty-five tardies last year at this time, now we have sixty-six, so that's an improvement of seventy-nine. So we're seeing that the, having more people out there, you know, talking to kids, has had a real positive influence for sure. And the other thing is like Chris talked about with PBIS, going over the expected behavior. If you really are going over that early and often with everyone, hey, we need to be in your seat in time. You, you got to be here, otherwise this is what happens, and just go over those expectations. We spend the whole first day, we've talked about it before, our rise above day, going over all expectations, so everyone knows what your role is here. There shouldn't be any questions on, on student handbook and things like that because we spend a whole day going over it, and I think that's something we can look at with the semester change also, is how do you tie that into second semester? I think there's some, some ideas I've already heard floating around, so that would be good. The other thing you will see, that's a compliment is, a compliment's probably not the right word there, sorry, our students that have been written up for tobacco is up because there's more people walking into the bathroom and seeing what's going on. And so it's, it's higher, it's not, not a great thing, but at least that, that is why. The number is a little bit inaccurate on there also because some of those are from the bus, so, but still, that's what's happening. So, but still, that's what's happening. And with that, so the bathroom sweeps, that's helping. We sent out a parent square to all parents just saying, hey, we're kind of seeing this thing going on. Talk to your kids, have a conversation. Stop hanging out in the bathroom, get your tail in a seat and go learn something. And, uh, good, good feedback from parents on that part. So that kind of explains last year, this year and last year, kind of where we are. So we're seeing positive things there. And you'll see later, we go over a slide, we go over this every month with our building leadership team to compliment, hey, the work you guys are doing is working. Take a look, here it is. So I'll show you a slide later that we go through that. Next one, please, Jackie. Alternative forms of discipline. Chris kind of talked about that. You'll see our detentions, uh, and then so those are all chopped up. And it says detentions and then conference, that's just a conversation. Hey, why are we using that word? You know, you got written up, let, let's fix this. And then out of school suspensions. And then what's, then it says other, and then timeout, it's just sitting in the office and then bus suspension. So with that, with other forms of discipline, things that we're, we're trying to use. What we do is on Wednesdays, we have early release for students. And then we have, uh, if students have some detention stacked up or some other discipline, we do what's called our cleanup crew or community service crew. And if it's not raining, we get outside and clean up the parking lot. And if it is raining, I ask teachers for volunteers, hey, do you need your classrooms cleaned? We'll come up and wipe some tables down and that kind of stuff. And, um, so that, that's one thing we're doing. The other thing is that for that timeout where they're down in the office, you're not just hanging out in the office. We, we put your phone in this little box and then, uh, we print off your missing work. Because so often like, hey, what, what should you be working on? I got everything. Okay, cool. Here you go. I printed Skyward. Looks like I've got a couple of math assignments. Let's do that while we're sitting here rather than just stare at the wall. So we've, we've been doing that. The one thing that we don't have that I, I wish we, we did have, we wish we, we did have was, uh, I, I did use an acronym, dang it. Uh, ISS for in-school suspension. Uh, that's just obviously, uh, staffing is not going to probably allow that addition. We know that, we know where we're at. But it would be nice to have that rather than send kids home. If we could have you in the building, we obviously know we're going to get better results from that. When a student is suspended, um, we, we talk with their, part of the, the suspension letter on the back is we talk with the parents about, you know, here's the options. Here's what we're going to do. We're going to provide work. Parents, you make sure they do the work. Student, you'll do the work great. And then Skyward notifies all the teachers. And then I also followed up with an email to the teachers and with transportation. So they know not to wait at that bus stop if the kid's not going to be there. And so we talked to them to make sure that we get work in teams. And then I reach out to the kid every morning when I get in, I just send him a quick message on teams. Hey, were you able to find any work? And a lot of times if they're not, I found everything except for, is Cursey here? Mister, you know, I don't have social studies. Okay. I can quickly get up to that social studies teacher or send a quick email and that kid will have the work. So that's worked out pretty well. And then we've also had parents that, you know, if there's an internet issue or something like that and they're going to be out of multiple days, we can get you the printed off copies. Give our teachers a little time, we'll have it ready for you and we'll figure out how to get this to you. So pretty flexible there on, on whatever it is. And we always, you know, use the line of, don't let a bad mistake ruin the rest of the trimester. Let, let's move on from this. Let's learn from it, take advantage of the time and do a bunch of your work. But you'll see the numbers, uh, we've improved as far as, uh, for, for those things, the, the out-of-school suspensions. Those are, you know, Chris gave the example of vaping, that, that's the major one. Most of our out-of-school suspensions are, are things that are illegal. It's vaping, fighting and drugs or alcohol. That's been what our suspensions are for. So it's not just random, like there, it's synchronized for where they go and, and why they, they are suspended. So that, that's what that number is. I think we're on to the next one, Jackie. Our next one breaks it down by grade and this is another thing we look at every single month with our, with our built team. We look at grade, um, just look at every group that we can. We've seen a big improvement there. I mean, I won't go through all, every single number. You can break it down. You can see that if you look at this year's 10th graders compared to when they were in ninth grade last year, that's an improvement of forty. I mean, juniors are seventy-five. So we're seeing less, uh, referrals written up for every group. So that's, that's positive. We are seeing that. Seniors, you guys only got twenty-two, doing good. That's, that's awesome. So that's, we do look at that though and there's the improvement there. That's nice to see. And the other thing about that is in the top corner there, it's, it's, once you break it down a little more, we dive into it a little bit more. It says seven ninth graders account for sixty-three percent of the discipline for that ninth grade. So it's kids that have multiple referrals. It's not, you know, the whole class has one or two. It's seven kids have sixty-three percent. For sophomores, it's five have fifty-five percent. And for juniors, five kids have, you know, right around that same forty, forty-three percent. So it's a small number that we're still working on. They're, they're going to come around, we'll get it all. But it's, it's a really small number that, that can drive those numbers up there. Our next one, Jackie. Please. Perfect. This is more data, ethnicity that we look at every single month also. Built reviews this, our building leadership team, and they kind of look for groups. What's going on? What are we seeing in groups that we can improve on? And then we take some of that information and then individually talk about those kids with our counselors and our tier-two and tier-three team of, hey, we're seeing this group kind of has a high number here or there. But we look at that, you know, we can see that some of those numbers there, I can't read. Says, you know, our Latino students had, we have, we saw a big drive last year and quite a few skippings. What's going on? Well, we also had our football field was open during lunch and they loved to play soccer back there. Well, we had to close that down because you were not going to class. You were just staying out there for both lunches and playing a lot of soccer, which is great. I love soccer, have fun with it. But little things like that can make a, make a big difference. And we close it and let's go to class. But more importantly, it's not like one single cause to fix. When you look over this kind of data, we look at, all right, how do we communicate better? We got to reach out to families. We got to let them know this is what's going on. It's got to be really good communication. Hey, you know, your, your son is out of class again. We got to get him in there just so they hear from us constantly. The other thing is with, with the PBIS, a positive relationship. If you want to go to that class, you enjoy the teacher, you enjoy the class, you're going to be there on time. So let's make it a place kids want to be. Let's make it positive, make it fun. And then got to partner with students and families to talk about, hey, why are we struggling with this? You know, I see you have a handful of these. What can we do to make it better? Those are all conversations that are, that are currently going now. For last year's goal, it was, sorry, next slide, Jackie. Last year, our goal was to decrease skipping by fifteen percent. We didn't quite hit that number and like Chris said, we were recreating some of the, the codes and things like that. And so we really were diving into, make sure this is a tardy. No, write it, it's tardy, write this up. Or if it's truant, write this up. So we made sure that our data was crystal clear and accurate for this year. So we could actually make a goal to improve. So we, we spent a long time with that, but it, it did make data that we're looking at now. I mean, we can stand behind it. We know that this is right. We're all using the same language for everything. That's good. Next one, this year's goal. Like I said, in August, this was a big discussion and this is something we, we set a pretty big goal. We had five hundred and thirty referrals for skipping last year. And we said, we want to cut that in half, which is still a big number. But let, let's go cut that thing way down with, you know, uh, with our climate committee, with all teachers working together on this. Families buying in and we've seen a great improvement. Like we said earlier, went from one thirty-seven down to eighty-one. Eighty-one, we're really close to that, right on track for fifty percent. So that's through one trimester. I mean, we're not there yet, but we got a, a lot of work to do still. But I think that it's positive and when, when teachers see that, we can celebrate with the kids that, hey, we've cut this number down. Let's, let's see if we can get it even better in the winter. And so, uh, it's been positive to see that, but our goal is to reduce it by fifty percent this year. And then our last slide, and I will stop talking, is a, this is what we take every single month to our built. Uh, and we look at it. So the first one there is, we look at, this is the current year, twenty-five, twenty-six, okay? And September, we had this many, October, we had this many. Well, why do we have more in October? What's going on? We dive into that, have conversations. We also compare it to last year. Well, we've seen great improvement, let's celebrate that, but what can we do better? And then the bottom, we look at, we go by grade, we go by ethnicity, and then we look at gender also. Just to again, see groups, is there something, um, big picture that we're missing? What's the root cause for this? How do we dive into this to make a good action plan to solve this, this skipping in any other discipline issue also? And then individuals, we talk about in tier-two and tier-three groups with our counselors. Any questions?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Where we have the eleventh grade and then the twelfth grade with the discipline, the big gap, like there's a difference here.
Yeah.
Up high and.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Words aren't coming out like they're supposed to either. But, um, the, is there something that they get in twelfth grade that they could use in eleventh grade? Or is it like a maturity level that?
I, I think it's.
When they get here, they go, it's almost over, we're just going to figure it out? Or is there something that's happening in twelfth grade that maybe if it happened in eleventh grade?
Like an extra incentive or something like that?
Like they're more in char, I imagine in twelfth grade, they're more in charge and they get to show people things. I don't know if that, I know when my kid's in control, he's like, I don't know, he's really mature about it, you know? But then when he's being directed, I know he's a little more like, eh, I do that.
Yeah, and I, I think part of it, like you said, also is the maturity of that. You're, you're looking out now of, I do have to get to this class. I got, I'm out of here in eight months. I got to be ready to go. I mean, our senior information there is, is really low. Also remember that junior class is huge. So that's also part of it. It's a big class, we know that. But I don't know about like an incentive. Juniors and seniors pretty much have all the same privileges. So I don't, but I get your point. That'd be interesting to bring, I want to bring it up to build, like, is there something we could do a year earlier and drop that number lower? So it's a good question.
Yeah. They, it's on them too, so.
Yeah.
Steve, you talked about your climate committee kind of helping with goals, et cetera. I love that idea.
Yeah.
So, and you talked a little bit earlier about the parents, like messaging, going out to the parents. Are they being made aware of kind of the goal for dropping these things down? Is it making it from the climate? You know, admin has it, climate committee's got it, the students are kind of getting it, but is that same message making it home?
That's a great point. I don't think we've shared that exact message that we're trying to cut skipping by. I think that would be a great note that I take right now for the end of the trimester of, hey, here's where we are. Let's celebrate this, we're moving in the right direction. We're still not like gold medal status here, we got work to do. But this is a good, that's a good point to let, because I think in-house, in the building, people understand it. But you're right, parents on the outside need to hear about that more. So yeah, that'd be a good trimester update.
I want to kind of piggyback on that, Nick. I'd break it down to bring up to Chris is all of this being communicated to the community? Because when there is an incident that is brought up, usually in social media. And then we hear, why did that kid get expelled? Kick that kid out? Why didn't this happen? Why?
Yeah.
I think we need to start being proactive in sharing, we understand discipline, um, concerns. And here's the changes, I mean, all of this that we present, making it in like bite-sized pieces for people to see. All the work that you all are putting into this and the training and, and the changes. I mean, I very much appreciate your two sub-goals because I remember last year, I said something specifically about one of these. And I appreciate that instead of shying away from it or pretending like I didn't say it, is saying, okay, yeah, let's dig deeper. What changes can we make? And so I would love for the community to know the hard work that the staff is doing, the admin, the students themselves as well. You know, and, and I, I did want to ask though, has all of this been updated in the student handbooks or in the discipline matrix?
Yeah.
Okay.
Like the, uh, admin, this, yes, those are all in there. Like major minors, those are out. Our new stuff is in there.
Right, right. Yes, I guess that's the big thing I was looking at.
Yeah, those are all.
Just so that everyone's using the same terminology and language.
Yes, yeah.
Right.
Yeah, and exactly. Those are there in, it's in every classroom for them to post.
Okay. Do you, um, with the loss of the levy, um, and obviously no S R funds, um, do you see an impact on, so we sort of tackled like academically, what we'll do if there's ISS or out-of-school suspension or expulsion? How we keep them afloat academically?
Yeah.
Do you anticipate a loss in social or emotional or mental supports? If we need to cut some things? Because oftentimes, as you know, it's more than just the kid and the behavior. There's something happening at home, there's something happening with them, there's something happening with their classmates. I guess I really worry that we're actually going to see behavior spike because we're going to be cutting a, a lot of things that bring them joy.
A hundred percent, yeah. No, that, that's, you're spot on with that. And that's a worry. I think there's always something else going on when a kid makes a decision that's going to end up in my office, right? It's very rarely like, oh, just out of the blue decided to sock that guy. No, like ever, something went bad in your day. And so, yeah, to not have all those supports for that kid, it's going to be scary. It's gonna, it's not, not ideal for sure. But that's, we're going to have to, you know, like Dr. Mike said, get, get creative and figure it out. Cause we've got to serve these kids, so.
Okay, and for your Wednesday cleanup crew?
Yeah.
Um, is transportation an issue so that these students stay after to help?
We call parents, but we call them. Yeah, we call them way before, like the week before and set it up. So they have multiple days. And then they're called Monday and Tuesday also of, hey, just a reminder, pick up blah, blah, blah at, you know, three o'clock. And then that gives them a week to, to schedule it. Yeah.
Okay.
And we haven't had, you know, it is sometimes a little bit of an inconvenience, obviously. I mean, if I was calling and you had to take time off work to come get your, your, but then that's also a time for a conversation of, let's, let's have that conversation with your student about why you're frustrated that you had to take time off of work. And so that's, we've done, figured with giving them enough warning in advance, it's, it's worked out so far.
Great, thank you so much.
Yeah.
I have another question.
Yeah, what you got?
So currently, when it comes to like suspension and stuff like that, does discipline cater to individual kids and what they did? Or is it like the same all across the board? Like if you have a kid who comes in for repeating drug issues and like he's just getting suspended constantly? Are you, you taking more time to like offer resources for drug abuse? Or is it just the same for like the same kid who gets in the fight alike?
No, you definitely are looking at it individually. And even with, I mean, if it's a one-time, you know, vape, that's not tobacco, but nicotine conversation, those are going on. Hey, do we, do you want to talk about some resources we can, don't get in this addictive game of this? But yeah, if you've been multiple times, we're definitely, and that's part of partnering with the, the families too of, and a lot of times, hey, we're trying to get them in here, trying to get into this. But yeah, that's, but it's, it is standard across the board of student A has a vape in their hand, student B has a vape two days later. It's going to be the same. And that's some of the, the work that we really made sure that that's not, there's no emotion, the, the emotions taken out of that. The, you know, oh, you're just mad at him so he got one more day. No, that, it's going to be the same no matter what they are.
Thank you. Good question.
Yeah, that was a good question. Nice job. All right.
Very good. Thank you guys.
Thank you.
All right, Hawkins.
Good evening, I'm Robert Callahan, principal at Hawkins Middle School. And this is Scott Davis, assistant principal of, um, the middle school. And since Scott is in charge of the discipline, I'm going to go ahead and let him talk. Awesome. Good evening, everybody. I'm glad to be here and I'll try to give you good information and then answer your questions if I can. Looking at our first slide, it compares the data this year through November thirteenth with last year through November fifteenth. And if you notice, the number of referrals is slightly decreased, um, this year in the same amount of time. It's not a significant drop, but it's, it's a slight drop. Notes on the data that I think that are important to look at, um, is that the fights are down thirty-nine percent, um, year on year. And when I'm thinking about student safety and all the work that goes into the work that we're doing with, with the students, to me, that's really super important. Especially with middle schoolers. And I think it kind of lends to a, a more friendly environment at the school as well. And creates a safer environment for everybody to be learning in. Of course, we'd like those referral numbers to be down further. But I think that, uh, you know, it also reflects that what we're doing is being documented. And so that we are following through with discipline and making sure that, um, you know, we're not depleting those numbers artificially. Next slide, please. Looking at the second slide, um, if we look at our out-of-school suspensions, they're down twelve percent. And if you look at our in-school suspensions, they're down eighty-four percent. Now, the reason for that honestly is that we don't have the staffing to run in-school suspensions at this time effectively. If we did, um, I believe that our out-of-school suspensions would be down eighty-four percent and it would just be reversed.[1779.60] um, because we would be able to do that and, and have more efficacy, I think, with, with that, um, effect. And so, that, that's a challenge for us. But in terms of, of the number of students being served currently, it's one hundred, last year it was ninety-three. The staff last year twenty-seven, this year twenty-six, very, very similar. And, uh, when I look at the trend data going out further, those numbers tend to drop, it looks like every year. Of course, this is my first year here, so I haven't seen this myself, but it seems that they start dropping as the year goes by. I think that, uh, we have impact on the students with our discipline, and then they start to, uh, um, improve their behaviors as the year goes by. Next slide, please. Looking at our, the, 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 uh, referrals by grade levels, this is really interesting to me. Grade six currently represents fifteen percent of our discipline, grade seven is sixty-one percent, and grade eight is twenty-four percent. And if you look at the prior year, uh, it's quite similar, actually, the way that breaks down. And, you know, we've talked about it and actually trying to figure that out. Um, and, and the interesting thing is when you look at the totals on, at the end of the year, they sort of almost become equal again. So I'm, I'm really kinda curious to see if that happens, but it seems like kids come into seventh grade and maybe developmentally, there's just something that happens in seventh grade. And it's something we definitely need to look into and see if we can find a way to curb that, because when you look at our sixth graders with, you know, thirty-seven referrals, if, if we could get in our, in our eighth graders with fifty-five, if we could get them back into the median there, that would reduce our discipline by thirty-five percent. So that would be really an, an important thing to figure out how to achieve, and, uh, next slide, please. This year through November thirteenth, referrals by ethnicity, there's no measurable disparity, um, present in our distribution of referrals by ethnicity, which is great. Uh, we like to see that, it shows that there's a very little institutional bias, and so that's really important to have that. Next slide, please. Looking at our, our behavior discipline goal, um, we're trying to get to five forty-two, we're currently at two hundred and thirty-four. So, I'm not sure we're gonna get there, um, I'm hoping we will, but I'm not gonna wanna artificially deflate the number of referrals that happen. Um, I need to document everything that happens and, and make sure that we're doing that correctly. My main goal is to have a safe school where kids can learn and, and everybody feels safe inside the classrooms and we have functional classrooms. The disproportionality sub-goals, currently, I don't have data, all the data there to show that, but I can tell you that out of the twenty-one students that have been, uh, identified with a suspension, only six have been in special education. So, that's relatively low number compared to what it has been in the past. And if we look at the next slide, our twenty-four, twenty-five behavior goals and results. Um, the results were, and they, the goal was to reduce by fifty percent the major referrals from twelve twenty-one and twenty-three twenty-four to less than six, six hundred in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. The results were seven hundred and twenty-two behavior referrals in the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, which was a forty-one percent reduction. So they didn't make the goal, but a forty-one percent reduction is, I think, pretty extensive and should be applauded. Um, the multilingual sub-goal, students served by the M L L program will receive fifty percent fewer major referrals from three fourteen in twenty-three, twenty-four to less than one fifty in twenty-four, twenty-five, and the results, there were a hundred and forty-four behavior referrals for the students in M L L program during the twenty-four, twenty-five school year. This was a fifty-four percent reduction, so, again, really, really significant drops. Um, I'd like to talk about new strategies to reinforce P B I S, because this is something that I'm working on hard at the school. Uh, we have incorporated a pause cash script system, so the teachers have, um, we call it pause cash, but it's basically just a monetary system. So if the students follow our guidelines and they're behaving the way that we expect them to behave under our positive behavior intervention support system, then they receive pause script from teachers, from staff, for various activities that they do. And they can take this and they can use it in a store that we have open every Thursday, and we got things like popsicles and some candy and stuff like that, that's, uh, in the store and donated. And so they're able to go in and spend that, and then we've had monthly positivity awards. And so those awards, um, include a award certificate, and teachers choose students based upon, uh, a rubric that they're following, and that the students have exhibited behaviors that fall within our P B I S expectations, and they've gone above and beyond. And last month, for example, fifty-three students were honored school-wide in three separate assemblies. Um, we do them sixth, seventh, and eighth grade to make them smaller so that we can be more attentive to the students in those assemblies. We also recognize perfect attendance in those assemblies, and on, on the trimester, we will be recognizing honor roll. So, the objective there is to have a positive, regular, uh, activity that's happening, so that they have something to look forward to, and give them a kudos for the, for the good things they do. Some of the upcoming things, we're, and we, we've actually started doing this a little bit, meaningful parent contacts, and just using the phone as the first line of communication. Parent Square is great, but I think the phone is really an important tool to use also, so that there's that personal communication. And morning greetings for all students, that's something that I do every morning, I meet all the students at the door and greet them as they come in, and that's a documented P B I S strategy. And then the Davis group for advisory, uh, I'm gonna be doing a regular group pull-out to support students with high S E L needs. So I'm gonna pull out about ten of our students who are identified with data and work with them individually twice a week, uh, to try and provide them, uh, with some support above and beyond. Now talking about alternate forms of discipline to reduce suspension rates. Upcoming, we're gonna have a school service gardening cleanup service work group, something similar to what they're doing at the high school, um, to provide, uh, an opportunity for kids to do restoration. Upcoming restorative circles, I was trained in, in that in a different district, and it's part of P B I S, and I'd like to bring that here and use that with our kids. Parents' school partnership, this is something we've done, uh, several times this year, and it's had a really good impact. We have parent, we get them background checked if they're not already background checked, and then they spend a day or a portion of the day going to school with their student. And that's actually worked out really, really well, and, uh, has, I think, been eye-opening for some folks. In fact, we got a, a parent volunteer out of it recently, so that helped a lot. After-school detention with a focus on restoration or academics, uh, not a punishment, just an opportunity to get some homework done or, or have a positive comment with the, the assistant principal or somebody in the office. And so we try to help them and get them an opportunity to make up lost work, um, that sort of thing. And it, it is, can be difficult on parents, but again, we schedule these way far out in advance and work with parents, um, to set that up so that it's not a, a huge burden. Uh, restitution or repairing harm, this is like an individualized response, but we've done some of this too. Uh, if they've, you know, broken a Chromebook or something's happened where there's something that needs to be done, we're just writing a letter of apology, because they feel like, you know, maybe I should do that, and, uh, really working with them in their own personal responses and some of those things. Um, in-school suspension, this is something we really would like to try and, and we're working with our staffing right now to try and figure out how to make that happen more. Um, but it has to be supervised and well, well-managed, um, to be safe and effective, and so we're working to get that to happen as well. Continuity of education for suspended students. So makeup days, for every day a student is out, they receive one day to make up any lost work, first of all. Concurrent work is provided, so if, if they get a suspension, it triggers teacher sending and loading student work into digital formats immediately. Um, so they have multiple points of communication that are designated for that, and so they'll immediately start to get, um, work showing up in their email or Parent Square or whatever the, they, they've got designated for that class. Student have access to books and computers to support work, we'll send them home with their equipment. Um, we respond to questions via email, Parent Square, or phone, and we'll get prompt help to students in need. And teachers follow up with students upon return. And luckily, like I said, our suspension rate hasn't been as dramatic as it has in the past, so hopefully that'll continue to decrease and that we can have some, um, better results there. We also review data in our built team every month, and, uh, I have a list of it here. We review of H M S major referrals by month with a three-year comparison. We discuss the types of referrals that are prevalent, what are the referrals for? We discuss the percentage of students who are involved with office discipline, thirteen percent, which means eighty-seven percent of our students at the time of printing this had not been involved with any office discipline. And I think that's important to kinda recognize that most of our students are not involved in high-level discipline. We look at the percentage of students who receive more than, um, one referral, and that's five percent currently, and more than four referrals, and that's one percent currently, so it's a very, very small group of students, um, as of our last meeting. We review the suspension numbers, and then we look at our fail rates. Um, we wanna know, you know, sometimes those fail rates have a really, uh, specific impact on, on kids and, and the pressure they're under to be successful. We review the number of classes with fail rates above twenty percent, which is a bad milestone, we try to avoid, and we strategize, strategize ways to reduce this by working with the teachers, uh, to help them, uh, make their instruction or classroom management more effective, so that that doesn't continue to be a problem. And then we review the monthly attendance rates, which are indicators of whether or not the students are feeling safe at school and wanna be there and be a part of what we're doing, and in a lot of cases, and so that's what we do. Um, I also wanted to add, you know, there's a lot of people working on this, it's not just me. We have a built team that works with our tier-one strategies, and they meet regularly. And, uh, it, it's a large group of teachers who are very dedicated, with some administrators trying to help and counselors in the mix, and, and then we have a M T S S, uh, tier-two and tier-three team that work together and create, uh, more of this dynamic and try to really be innovative and make sure that our kids are getting what they need. And we drill down individually into students as well and try to help them as individuals and provide resources and support so that they're having a better outcome. And, uh, I just wanna say, middle school's hard for kids sometimes, and it's not, you know, it's probably the most difficult place when it comes to discipline in terms of them growing up and changing and the alterations that happen in their lives. And we're there to help them and support them and do everything we can to make it a success. Do you have any questions?
How long, so, sorry, first clarify.
Yeah.
Um, if a student is facing suspension, we are doing an out-of-school suspension because we don't have the personnel in the building to do ISS?
I think that's the case in high school as well, that some, some of that is happening because we are definitely like short on personnel to manage that.
Do you know how long this has been going on?
Just since the beginning of this year, I believe.
Um, I'm sorry, how many students is that?
Well, I would, I would just be estimating, I mean, we've had twenty-nine suspensions. And probably, I think, three ISSs. I would, I would say most of those could have probably been ISSs, to be honest with you.
So are we documenting it I, as ISS and just?
No, because, I mean, that would be, you know, false documentation.
Right, but I guess I'm concerned with students possibly receiving a harsher consequence that could have other impacts elsewhere, simply because we don't have a person to, I feel like that's unfair for the student and the family. I'd love to brainstorm some ideas, Christine, on how we can help out with that.
Any other questions?
Well, I think this is the longest that I've gotten to see you, uh, talk, because usually, you know, it wasn't your turn yet, I guess. But I really appreciate, uh, hearing, um, you put everything together and, um, I like hearing you, you're very good. You guys, uh, seem like a great team.
Yeah.
Um, I, I like the, um, that the in-school suspension, that you guys are looking forward, uh, to growing that, so that's a good thing.
Yes.
Um, and I'm, I know that the high school's working on that too. Um, you said, what was it? Oh, the personal communication, um, instead of the parent square, I really like that you reach out, that's really cool. Um, I know, I'm a parent, he's been through all the schools here, you know, except for Belfer, I think, but, um.
I can say personally, I don't really use Parent Square, I don't send parents' emails too much. I might do a follow-up email, but I'll generally wanna talk to a parent, you know, either face-to-face or on the phone, just because I think that the communication eliminates a lot of like misconstrued thoughts and ideas, and we can sort of take care of those things in a communication, but I also think you have to document it.
That's cool, and I, I look forward to, uh, to your growth, uh, in working on the ISS.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Um, just a real quick comment on the in-school and out-of-school, these are suspendable offenses.
Yeah.
And so, um, if a kid gets in a fight, that's a suspendable offense. While we would love to be able to do in-school to keep them in there, um, it's a total legit to suspend them out of school. So there's not any offenses where a kid's putting out, put out of school that should not have been put out of school.
Correct.
It's just an alternative to the suspension. Um, it's like if we have a kid that's being suspended for nicotine use and we had a different system in which, um, they had a consequence to learn not be suspended, we could put that into place of some sort of buyback or something. I just don't want you guys to walk away thinking we're suspending kids for offenses that are not worthy of a suspension, they are.
But there is still a difference, I mean, the data is there, and that's why more and more districts have moved towards ISS or restorative practices, because the data is there, and so, and I understand that if we have certain offenses that are suspendable and yet among our buildings, we're doing out-of-school suspension here for a similar offense, but over here, we're not, we don't have the staff. And this is in no way a comment on your leadership, yours or yours. Um, I think I'm saying it out loud on record and asking our superintendent to look at it, because I think this is one of the things that, one of these difficult conversations we need to have, and another reason why failing the levy by so little votes, like these are additional things that we need, and it's going to impact the students.
Yep.
I don't think you're gonna get an argument from any administrator, so, so we're with you, I just wanted to make sure that you knew that these are suspendable.
I, I very much appreciate that, and again, I apologize if it came across as a rebuke, it was more of like, oh my goodness, if people could just.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah, we agree.
Well, thank you guys, very much.
Thank you.
All right, Jessica, you're up.
Hello, I am Jessica Collins, principal at Sand Hill Elementary.
And I'm Tyler Lundby, assistant principal.
And, um, we are obviously presenting to you, but this is Tyler's wheelhouse. He does the discipline at Sand Hill, and he does a fantastic job. So this is his opportunity to share with you guys, um, how things are going at Sand Hill, and I wanna start off by saying that, um, his job is difficult, um, doing this work all day is real hard. Balancing, um, a learning environment and making sure that we have students that understand, um, their behaviors, maybe disrupting that and how to work through that is not easy work, and he's been doing a great job, so I'm excited for him to share with you.
Thank you. All right, so, um, okay, um, kinda wanting to start off with kind of where our commitment is to our staff and our families when it comes to, um, supporting students with discipline. And it's important to kind of look at the context, or look at the next slides with the context of these commitments. Um, so our top priority is really making sure that, you know, students have, um, safe, positive, and productive learning environments. Um, that doesn't mean that we want kids just out who are not supporting that, but that we are, um, making sure we're protecting learning for students that are, um, engaged in that learning. Um, what you'll notice is that over eighty percent of our students thrive in our tier-one system, and so it's a relatively small portion of our student body that is, um, what I would say, struggling. Um, and if you look below, um, this graph here is showing you that, that, that green portion is students who have zero to one referral. Um, it is really the, the top tiny portion, um, on that graph that represents students who just have some pretty significant, um, social, emotional, learning needs. Um, so last year's goal was that Sand Hill would reduce our number of off, office referrals by twenty percent. Um, in twenty-three, twenty-four, it was three hundred and fifty-three, um, and then, of course, the goal would have been to get to two hundred and eighty-three. Uh, simply put, that was not met. Um, and again, I would kind of reference the, the context of our commitments is making sure that we are, um, protecting that learning environment. We do, however, continually reflect on our, our referral numbers and then make, uh, adjustments to our practice as they are appropriate. and then make uh, adjustments to our practice as they are appropriate. As far as monthly data review goes, um, our, our built, um, I frequently share with them um, our Edge Clamor data. Um, that shows kind of where we are with um, various aspects of um, our discipline. Um, something you would notice or something that's important to note is that seventy-one percent of our suspensions um, come from students that are in our district behavior program. And um, without going into too many details, these are students who um, who are kind of passing that tier three level going into tier four, if there existed. Um, there are students that have, require some really significant interventions. And one thing I would note here is um, as much as we would love to provide an ISS option for these particular students, I think we could agree that um, the students that are displaying the behaviors that they are, um, it really comes to a point where they need to um, not be on campus for the remainder of the day. Uh, so focus is moving forward, um, kind of related to what we said before, uh, or what I said before. Our top priority is supporting students' academic growth. I'd also note in there that we're also, it's not just academic, but social, emotional growth. Um, protecting the learning environment is a top priority. Making sure that all students have that access to high-quality instruction. That said, students who are disrupting the learning environment, they're not just kicked out, but they're given multiple opportunities to learn um, from their mistakes. And we have several different layers to that. And then of course, you know, supporting students with high behavioral needs continues to remain one of our top challenges. It takes a good chunk of my day trying to make sure that we have strong systems in place and ongoing resources and supports to help meet those very um, unique uh, needs. Um, so this slide here represents our data that's um, organized by type of behavior or the referrals that we get by type of behavior. Um, what you'll notice is that at this point last year, we had two hundred and forty-six referrals. Um, and then for this year, we are at two hundred and five, so a somewhat notable reduction overall. Um, one thing I want to note, and if you ever spent time looking at this more closely, um, there's been, as some other schools I've mentioned before, there's been some reclassification in what things are called. Uh, so what used to be called like contact or physical contact now falls under the fight category. Um, which is kind of where you would see the trend there. And um, next to disrespect, physical aggression and fighting remains one of our top most prevalent admin-supported and admin-managed behavior. Um, kids tend to, I would say, go to that fight mode. Um, and, and that's one of our biggest struggles, so yeah. Uh, this next one here is our referrals that, um, or sorry. Yeah, show the actions that we use to respond to referrals or that I use to respond to the referrals that I receive. So this particular area here highlighted a need this year to reclassify how we're, how I'm in, inputting some of those actions. So for example, you'll notice other has a pretty significant amount of numbers or amount of referrals. And um, in that, there's several things, but a lot of it is what we call recess reteach. And I'll be speaking to that more in a few slides. But recess reteach is a type where we um, provide students an opportunity to learn the skills that they're missing. Um, for the longest time, I was putting in another because there wasn't one that really matched. Um, and then through some support from district office, um, realized that maybe we could use one that says individualized instruction. So moving forward, that's going to be able to, or going to be a little more um, broken down so we can see which actions are, are actually being used. All righty, these are our referrals specifically by grade level. Um, one thing you'll notice is that looking at last year's um, fourth grade cohort has now moved into fifth grade and you will see that trend has continued. Um, you know, this is my second year at Sand Hill. Um, but it sounds like these, this group of students has um, had a significant history as far as behavior goes, moving through from kindergarten on. Um, so that continues to be an area where we really focus a lot of our um, preventative measures to support with behavior. Um, but it is also an area that group that's, is still struggling. Um, this slide shows our breakdown by ethnicity. Um, one thing I want to note and I'll speak to later in our goals as well. Last year's data overall does not show that there is a disproportionality. Um, we are currently seeing it, if you look in the data through this year, or I think it's through November thirteenth, there is disproportionality um, making it self-known. So we are watching that closely um, and, and checking for, you know, any systems that might have specific bias that might be causing that or, or looking at maybe is there a maybe a language barrier in support from parents and how do we bridge that um, gap? So, yeah. And then here, this is our um, behavior goal for this year. So all that minor goal this year is to reduce our ODRs by twenty-five percent from seven hundred and fifty-one last year uh, to five hundred and sixty-four fewer this year. Um, with our current two hundred and five, um, we're pretty close to where we were last year, but I mean, I'd say there's hope. Um, as the year goes on, as um, I think Hawkins spoke to, students tend to start to get in their routines and rhythm, um, and we, we tend to notice somewhat of a dip. Going down to our disproportionality goal, currently it says that Sand Hill will continue to ensure that there is no disproportionality between um, these specific students who are multilingual learners and students who are not, or I guess you would say monolingual learners. Um, that said, going back to what I mentioned before, uh, the, the data from the beginning of the school year to now is showing somewhat of a disproportionality. Um, so continuing to monitor that. And then lastly, uh, Sand Hill will reduce the risk ratio of students served with IEPs who are suspended by fifty percent to close that gap. That said, going back to our seventy-one percent of our suspensions are coming from our behavior program and those students are students who um, receive IEP services. Um, so last year's focus was really focused, or sorry, last year's focus was really about making sure our systems were implemented with fidelity and that we had a strong system and then supporting teachers and using that system well. Um, we have seen, I'm sure Jessica would agree, we have seen great things come from that. Um, and so at this point, we are staying the course and continuing to support teachers. Um, we do have a few new hires this year, so making sure that they are also using that system. Um, as Steve, I think, was speaking to, it's important that we're all like kind of on the same page that our data is accurate, um, and that's been a real important focus. And then alternatives, alternative forms of discipline, um, like I was speaking to earlier, recess reteach um, is one that we tend to use quite a bit. It gives the time for our MTSS recess person to um, focus on specific skills students are missing, it's kind of a pause. Um, we do use lunch detention. Um, we do have an after-school detention option on early release Wednesdays. I try to make sure that's a collaborative decision with a parent, so it's not, because it does not come with transportation, obviously. Um, so that parent's going to have a buy-in. Um, and then as far as in-school suspension goes, I would say we're not completely without um, struggles in, in staffing for that. However, we do make it work whenever possible and I, I, like I was saying before, whenever it's appropriate. Um, there are certain times where keeping the kid at school is not going to be the most appropriate response. Um, and then finally, uh, reverse suspension is an option we've used once or twice this year. Um, it's inviting parents in to come see kind of sort of the struggles that we're having. That said, kids tend to be well-behaved in front of their parents. And so really, it's not so much to try to catch the kid doing something, it's more to try to show the kid that we are a partnership with your parent and the expectation is this, so. It was successful for the last one. And then lastly, um, when out-of-school suspensions unfortunately do occur, uh, students are guaranteed access to their academic engagement. Um, we ensure that they're given developmentally, developmentally appropriate and academically relevant work. Um, we don't just send kid, or we ask teachers not to just send kids home, obviously, with something that they can't access. Um, and then of course, support is offered by the classroom teacher when needed and we make sure that um, families are aware how to get in contact with those teachers. And then lastly, an agreement is signed uh, between us as admin and the parent outlining kind of expectations on how we expect the student to participate, parent to participate, and how we will provide support as well. Yeah, any questions?
I love the reverse suspension, that's really cool. And uh, I, we went to Sand Hill, me and my sons, me and my son. And I was invited, it wasn't called reverse suspension, but invited in and I don't know if I fixed anything or helped with it, but I could see it, so I know that it is worth it, so that's really cool.
I think it sometimes allows families to also see what the expectations of their students are in a classroom environment. Um, and I think that it helps the parents too.
Yeah, I think partially too, is they get to share some of why the kid might be struggling. I know we had our chances, so that's really cool.
Sure.
So the only one I had is that one grade level where we see it move, the discipline moving, that group was in kindergarten during COVID, correct? So they started their school off.
Not in the most
Not in the classroom.
Yes.
I just wanted Nicole and I to go back, but I said, I think that's that.
It is, and obviously a group of really awesome kids that um, interact very interestingly with each other. Um, a lot of, a lot of layers there that we're
Right.
constantly trying to work through.
And I want to give some kudos to our fifth grade team. They really worked hard to put some additional tier two, tier three even layers in the classroom environment to try to get these kids to um, to, yeah, keep it together. So they're working hard, they, it did, they are lower than they were last year, um, but Hawkins, here you, here they come.
It's interesting to see that cohort move through. I mean, just because it was however many years ago, doesn't mean we're not still seeing the impact on the kids. And it's interesting to just remember that cohort where they were when it all shut down.
Right, right, absolutely.
Where did you were best, send them to no school.
Yes, we're trying.
There you go.
Any other question?
Perfect, thank you guys.
Thank you.
Pam.
So good evening, everybody. I'm Pam Klussman, I'm the principal at Belfort Elementary School.
And I'm Kristi Dahlby, the Assistant Principal.
So Kristi, one of the biggest jobs she has at our school is discipline. She is really good at it and that was one thing she said first when we interviewed her to be an AP at our school was, I love discipline. And so we all kind of lived right on, no, I'm kidding. But she does a really good job because she really cares about the kids and she really cares about making connections with the families. So she's going to present to you some um, discipline data points. She's going to present some goals and some action items that we, we've been working on as a team. And I'm going to chime in too on some of those slides, but you got it.
All right. Um, so we're just diving right into our data for ours. And I know that you've seen a lot of these little bitty charts already today. Um, but we're starting with our referrals by behavior. And so this year defiance is our highest with forty-five and right behind that is disruption with forty-two. And we can go ahead and sit to the next slide. So this is our referrals by our action taken. And so we have a hundred and eight loss of privilege. And so when you're, when we're thinking about loss of privilege, this is usually something where they're losing like a recess or something like that. So it's not just them losing recess though, there's a lot of different things that happen during that time. So it could be um, like a reteaching of expectations. It could be we're learning some calming strategies to calm our body down. It could be that they're looking at problem solving. And so we're going over Kelso's choices and figuring out how do, how do we make better choices on that playground? What are some other options that I have? So these are also times that we might do some of our community service. We might do those conflict management and those restorative groups between kids to, you know, help work through those issues together and figure out together, how can we problem solve if the situation came up again? What could we do differently to get different results? So we do a lot of that during, during those loss of privilege times. Um, let's see, next slide. Uh, so this is our referrals by grade. So second grade is our highest this year. Um, you could look back to last year and see that last year first grade was our highest. And so as some of the other people said, you know, different classes kind of ebb and flow, right? And so this just happens to be not only one of our bigger classes because we do have four second grades, but it's also just one of those classes that has been our ebbing and flowing. And so they're, they're kind of continuing that trend. So we're looking at that group and saying, okay, what else can we do to, you know, work with this grade level to, to kind of get some of those numbers down?
Okay, so this one was it, Kristi and I had not seen the data presented like this when we were given this slide. Chris had put this together for us as a way to look at some of our ethnicity and referrals. And so Kristi and I saw this and so we started to have a different lens on how are we doing in our building and realizing that we need to put this lens before us more often because we had not been putting this one before us. Our focus, and you'll see in a moment, has been more on our MLL students and disproportionality with referrals with them and with our um, kids who have IEPs. So this was a new way for us to look, so we'll be focusing more on this as the year goes on.
Okay, next slide. So this is our referrals by location. And as you can see, our classroom is the highest it has been last year and this year with playground um, shortly behind it. But both of those are higher this year. So classroom is higher and playground is also higher. So one of the things that we've talked about, like with our built team and with Pam and myself is, okay, looking at playground, one of the things that we think is a contributing factor to, to playground is that this year we've only had one dedicated activity assistant for the playground. And so that's, you know, groups of like ninety-plus kids sometimes. And so that's a lot of kids for just one person who knows all of those rules. And so we have other paras that have been helping to support that, but they jump in kind of here and there and it hasn't really been consistent. So we have someone who just started, so we're super excited and we're hoping that that's going to bring some more consistency to the playground. And she just started today, so we're going to be kind of watching those numbers to, to see, because we're really hoping that that's going to make a big difference. So, um, and the classroom numbers, that brings us into the levels of discipline. Nope, you can go back. And so that's something that we've worked really hard on this year, so um, that's, we went from the minors to the majors. And so we have So our built team has worked really hard on this and we've really been looking at it and kind of drilling down on what these things mean and then what each person's responsibility is in these different areas. So we have the level one is the classroom managed, level two is the admin-supported. And so with a level one classroom managed, it's the teacher enters it into Edge Clamor and the teacher gives consequences and contacts the parents or guardians. And with a level two though, it's the, the teacher enters the ODR into Skyward, contacts parents or guardians, and then I give consequences and then I also re-contact the parents or guardians to let them know what, um, what we did when their student was with me. So that's, you know, letting them know, hey, we did a reteaching, we worked on classroom expectations, you know, we had a restorative circle with these kids, so. Kind of bringing that full circle. And then on the back, we've got the level three, which is our more severe behaviors where if, you know, they call on the walkie, that they need admin support and then I go and remove the student from the classroom. And so again, we've really been working on kind of getting these honed in. And so I think that our teachers have been doing an amazing job at putting all of these ODRs into the system and really documenting all of these. And I think that that's one of the reasons that we've seen a rise in some of those, those ODR numbers. Okay, so our expectations. So one of the things that we did is our built team really agreed that we needed more student-friendly signs. And so our amazing fourth grade teacher, Courtney Thomas, did all of our graphics for these and then we had them printed out on did all of our graphics for these, and then we had them printed out onto these lovely big signs in this corrugated plastic. And so we're working on getting these around all of our different sections of the schools. So we have them for bathrooms, we have them for the hallways, library, all different areas. So these have been very fun, so. Um, the, one of the other things that we're doing is, can you go back Jackie? Is our expectations rodeo. And so that's something that we will be doing after all of our major breaks coming up. So we'll do it after winter break, mid-winter break. So that's where the classes go around the school, different areas of the school. And Pam and I are in different areas, some of our paras are in different areas. And we're teaching the expectations that are specific to that area of the building. And so we'll be doing that again on a regular basis. So winter break, they'll have that big break, they'll come back, we'll do the expectation rodeo, review what all those expectations are again, right after mid-winter break and then right after spring break, to kind of help keep those fresh in kids' brains. And then I know it's not up there, but we, one of the things that we also do is our positives. And so we have our positive shop and kids can, can earn positives for following our four pillars. And a lot of teachers are super, super great about just kind of throwing those positives at the kids every time they see them following those expectations. And then once a month, the students have the opportunity to buy stuff from our positive shop.
Okay. So our C SIP goal this year for behavior and discipline, we had, we're going to be, let's see. Belfort Elementary will reduce the overall number of office discipline referrals by fifteen percent from four hundred and sixty-eight in two thousand twenty-four, twenty-five to three hundred and ninety-eight or less. This year, I'm not sure we're going to meet that goal. And one of the things Kristy pointed out too is we're really trying to get the teachers to be very good about putting the data in. Instead of side conversations, we need the data. And so we're seeing an increase in those ODRs. We have seen an increase in behaviors too in the building. And so we're trying to address those as well as we move through the school year and figure out what we're seeing and how we can best prevent some of those behaviors from happening moving forward. Disproportionality, so we've been looking at our MLL students and students with IEP. And one thing that really stood out to us is we have a significant number of referrals that are coming in for students with IEPs. And so there are multiple students who have IEPs in our building and who are contributing to that number base. And so what can we do to support them more fully? Because we know a lot of that is around a social emotional component for them. So we're into some pretty good conversations right now. And we have some networking going on with people throughout the building to help support them in multiple ways. And we're documenting all of those supports that we have going for them. Progress monitoring of our goals, we have our FastBridge Sabers. And we just, for the, I would say for the first time since I've been in the building and Kristy, we were really able to use some information for Sabers to benefit a student significantly. And we saw the true benefit of the Sabers data. We also have what we call our MTSS Tier Two Team. And we meet and we have set new thresholds. One of the thresholds uses information from Sabers. So even if a teacher has not brought a child to student of concern meetings, which is once, uh, once a week on Fridays, that'd be our Tier Three meeting. This, we go in as a team and we look through that data and we see if there are any students who have been missed. Because then we form, formulate a plan for that student and we reach out to the teacher as well. And then the other thing we started to do this year is a more purposeful, what we call follow-up meeting to our student of concern meetings. So Wednesdays are a busy day for us because there's a group of us who meet. The teacher will come to the first meeting, our counselor covers that classroom. So the teacher can be there for a half hour to report how the interventions are working for that student that we had a meeting on six weeks ago. And then after that meeting, we have another one where we as a team, without the teacher, just a team, looking at more significant data on other students who might we need to follow up with, with teachers. So I think that we're making some better progress looking at our data and being very, much more purposeful with it. The built team reviews the Swiss data one time a month. And we look at, a lot of our focus has been on location this year because we knew that with only one activity assistant and the switching of the paraeducators to fill those extra holes and how we would, because paraeducators are coming from working with students to rushing out to the playground, to rushing off the playground to get back to working with groups of students. So we were very cognizant this year of the toll that might take on our students and behaviors on the playground. So today was the first day that we had a really huge success on our playground. And we had one person out there consistently with the activity assistant. And that was hopefully something that we see as a continuing basis. There were a couple of things I did not put in there that were on that slide that I wanted to share with you. One that we are so proud of, and that is that last year when Kristy and I first started, we had a meeting with some of our parent, our parents and teachers. One thing that parents really said is we wish that there were classes for us so that we could learn more because we don't know what to do with some of the behaviors we are seeing. So last year we had reached out for some resources and we were not able to find some to come into the building. This year, during one of our meetings with some parents, the same concern arose. And our new school psychologist said, I'm willing to do those classes. And so he put together a series of four, and so we've had two and we've had parents turn out. So I feel really thankful because I think that's part of that connection with our community and our parents. And that can help maybe mitigate some of these behaviors that we are seeing just through some education for our parents too. So I wanted to bring that forward because that for us is a big success.
That's huge.
Any, any questions?
I don't have a question, but I do. I'm, I like when you said, well, that I like discipline. I mean, not that, I'm a total sucker, so. Um, but when you said calm our body down, I can tell that you're not just, you know, into the discipline part, but showing them how self-control is important. And that learning how to discipline or steady ourselves and doing it early on helps them get through middle school, which is really harder than eventually high school. And I love those signs, visuals especially for elementary, but those signs are stellar. And you guys are very resourceful. When you can't find something, then you just said you had.
Oh, our first grade teacher?
Yeah, yeah. That, that they were teaching and that you already are utilizing it, and that's really great. So I love that.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you guys. All right, James Taylor.
All right. Hi there. Hi, I'm Travis Quinn. I am the ALE principal and CT director. I don't, good news is I don't have a bunch of discipline data to go through with you guys. But I am going to take this opportunity after I cover some of the discipline to talk about our ALE enrollment process and just share with you guys what that looks like for our students and our families that are interested in that. Uh, so there's the discipline data. We had two suspensions in twenty-four, twenty-five. And at this point in the school year, we have had three suspensions. There's, there's not a lot of data to comb through as far as the suspensions go. I love to say that it's because we don't have any misbehaviors. Like we still have behaviors, you know, there are still high schoolers, they still struggle with decision-making, believe it or not. But they, uh, it, there's a lot of logistical factors that I think help us be successful in kind of intervening and kind of reframing a lot of those behaviors for kids. Like there's some logistical factors, like you, you can't skip it James Taylor. Like it would be the shortest game of hide and go seek ever. There's other pieces, like we have a really cool student culture, something that I'm really proud of. The, the student culture at our school is very inclusive and welcoming. And it's been something that's been really fun to watch evolve over the last few months. You know, when kids started sitting, you know, in the cafeteria in ones and twos, I've quickly seen them group up into, uh, you know, groups of four and five. And then as kids enroll, like it's fun watching these kids and watching to see which groups they land in and form these positive relationships. And I think that's probably one of the biggest factors for why our discipline rates are so low. You know, we don't have a lot of student conflict. Given, you know, the amount of students that we have, we're able to give kids a lot more one-on-one attention, a lot more one-on-one coaching conversations with them. They, we build a lot of good adult relationships with these kids. And so we are able to leverage those relationships and kind of get better behavior and better decision-making out of them. There's a lot of times where they'll come seek out us as the adults when they are having a conflict and we're able to kind of coach them up and tell them, you know, here, here's how we can solve this, rather than them settling it on their own. We're able to kind of walk them through how they can handle it proactively and things like that. And so all of those things combined have really led to really low discipline rates at James Taylor, which I am super grateful for. But that's really all I have to share on the discipline side. For the ALE entrance process, whenever students or families are interested in exploring ALE as an option, the first thing that we do is we point them towards our online application form. On that application form, kids and families give us kind of the background information of where they're at credit-wise, what is their, you know, initial interest and intrigue in ALE? What are kind of some of the barriers that are keeping them from being successful in school right now? And just kind of gathering just surface level information from them on that application. As we get closer to the start of the next term, usually two to three weeks out, our counselor at James Taylor will start doing intake meetings with the student and their family. And that's where we kind of dive into the online application and really dig into, so why, you know, why is it that you want to go to an alternative school? Which alternative program is in, of interest to you? We also take that opportunity to kind of explain to them the difference between our three ALE programs. And then also really dive into, you know, hey, what are the kids' perspective on their academic and behavior and social emotional needs and getting feedback from the parents or guardians on what they see as kind of their biggest needs for ALE? After the intake meeting, we have an ALE entrance committee. That includes a couple representatives from North Mason High School, a couple representatives from James Taylor, and then an individual from the district office, where we kind of sit down and we go through our list of kiddos. We have a kind of all the data that we've collected on them from the application from the intake meeting. And we make objective decisions based on capacity of the program, on which program will best meet the needs of that student. And then after student has been approved by the ALE entrance committee, our teacher will reach out to them and they'll hold an orientation meeting with that student and their family. They'll create a written student learning plan, they'll establish their academic learning goals for the first month. And then they'll also kind of develop what we call green sheets, which is basically like their pathway to graduation. Like these are the courses that we need to hit to be able to hit the finish line. And then we throw them into the ALE program and get rolling. Go ahead Jackie. Profile of an ALE student, given the three unique programs, there's also kind of unique student profiles that fit each program. Some of the overlapping considerations for all three programs, first and foremost, is always going to be attendance, especially for James Taylor Day and James Taylor Night. We want to see our kids willing to show up to school, given our limited capacity. You know, I would never want to give up a seat for someone that won't ever come. And so that's, that's a really big fast factor for those two programs. Credits is something that we definitely look at as far as are they on track to graduate? We definitely want to prioritize kids that are credit deficient to get into this program. And we also want to prioritize our upperclassmen. And then as always, there's extenuating circumstances that validate a specific need for a program. For James Taylor Day, that's really our program for students that still want to have that in-person component. They still want that social connection, kind of that daily routine of waking up, coming to school, that, you know, that in-person teacher connection. But they would also really benefit from having a smaller learning environment. They would benefit from having a smaller social scene. They'd benefit from more of those individual one-to-one check-ins that they get with their advisor regularly. For James Taylor Night, that's a program that we really prioritize for our students that need to work to support their family. And like I emphasize need because it's, it's, they're not working by choice, they're working because they must. And so we want to make sure that they have the opportunity to fill that familial obligation, but still have an opportunity to attend school and get their high school diploma. For night school, they do have to have their own transportation. And we do also prioritize fifth-year seniors because they're usually the ones that start working, but they're still willing to come back and get their high school diplomas, which we want to help with. Home Link is more for our online, is for our students that want the online environment. They want the totally remote option, whether it's due to medical reasons or mental health reasons. They need that, that remote learning from home. That, the biggest caveat for that one is obviously kids have to have reliable internet access so that they can access the curriculum and that they can also communicate regularly with their teacher. And then generally, these are students that we want to have demonstrated in the past an ability to learn independently. Because it does require a certain amount of autonomy throughout their day to engage in the schoolwork and stuff. Go ahead Jackie. Staying in ALE programs. So students must meet monthly progress goals that we put in their WSLP. When students don't meet their monthly progress goals, we have a myriad of interventions that we put into place to try to support them so that they can meet these goals. When a student consecutively for three months does not meet their progress goals, we're required to do a change of placement where they're not able to maintain in the same ALE program. So generally, like if a student's in Home Link and they haven't been successful for three months, what we'll do is we'll meet with the family, we'll have a conversation and we'll recommend that they come to James Taylor Day. When a student is not successful at James Taylor Day, they're put in a position where they have to look at other schooling options, which generally include returning back to the high school. Those are never fun conversations to have and we try to be proactive. You know, each month we, you know, meet regularly with these families when a student doesn't make progress just because we really want to clearly communicate, hey, like this is really important. Like this is OSPI guidelines, if you got to stay in this program. And, you know, ALE usually isn't a kid's first option, it's usually a backup option. And so like just on a personal level, like it's really important to us that we keep kids in the program. Because when they leave our program, there's no guarantee that they're going to stay with school and stuff, which is obviously the antithesis of what we would want. Capacity-wise, James Taylor Day is over capacity. James Taylor Night is very close to capacity. And then Home Link has a little bit of room, but it's still quite full. Both those things are really fun to celebrate and numbers are going to fluctuate. We have a handful of kids that are on the precipice of graduation, which is really cool and exciting. And it will also open up more seats for more kids to get in. I'm not familiar with this slide. We didn't have any behavior goals because based on our discipline data, like our focus was far more on academics and attendance. Alternative forms of discipline and MBLC work, we were really intentional this summer with our built team, working on some PBIS stuff, like we put, you know, we didn't have a cool poster like Kristy's, but we had a lot of different signs with acronyms that kind of motivated positive behavior and was explicit about, here's what expectations we're looking like in the cafeteria, in the classroom. And then we really tried to kind of hammer it from the get-go with kids and teach them, here's what we're looking for so they know what to do. I'll leave it at that. Questions?
Do we have students coming from out of district specifically to attend one of our ALEs?
We have some, yeah.
And for our resident students, do we see a lot of self-referral? Or is there, like maybe they're at one of our traditional comprehensive schools and someone says, you know, this isn't working out, let's try a different way of learning?
You know, I'll be honest, I don't, I don't really know where the genesis of the conversation comes from. I imagine it's, it's a combination of one, I think, you know, it's out there that there's this ALE opportunity and there's some kids that identify that as something that they want. And then I'm sure there's other conversations that they have with other staff members where they say, hey, this is really tough. We do have another option. So probably a combination of both.
A little bit of both, okay. Well, and I, I'll date myself, you know, when I was in high school, ALE was for the, the bad kids.
Right.
And at OSPI, I fought so hard to break that stigma, right? And we still might have families that if you say, hey, let's try James Taylor, they go, that's no, no, my kid, my, but my kid's not getting in trouble. They're, you know, I'm not pregnant, it's not. And trying to break that stigma and say, just some people learn differently. Or as you mentioned, family situations are different for some students. I really, really appreciate the stages and the steps because that has proven when an ALE program takes the time to explain to the family, here are the rules that we have that the state puts in place and that we've put in place to ensure success for your student. When students and families are brought in and given the knowledge on how ALE works and how it's different and how it's beneficial, they're more likely to be successful. So this, this is amazing and not all ALE programs in our state do this. So we're like ahead of the curve if we have this. I appreciate that. Thank you.
I got something. Wait, do you have a question?
No.
Okay. Um, well, as a mom perspective, parents' perspective and a student's perspective, my son goes to James Taylor, as you know.
Yes, he does.
And he's second year, so the first year, it's rough. You know, it's rough to get in there and I think. You know, it's rough to get in there and I think self-awareness, um, in the first year was really rough. But I think the second year, um, it grew in your school. I think the def- the different level of maturity that's parallel with the North Mason High School is a little bit, it's a little bit different. But you guys give him a space to grow that and it is quieter and smaller. So I think that that has helped my son. He just passed his driving test and he did it quietly in a room instead of with the group. Took him four times, but that fourth time, that was the difference. So he's used to learning that there. And, um, yeah, I'm, I absolutely love your school. And not that I don't love all the other schools that he's gone to in this, but it fits my son. And we don't, um, we don't see anything different except for the growth. So it's really great.
No, it's a cool place to be.
It really is.
Definitely different from that stereotypical stigma.
Absolutely. You're doing a great job.
Cool. All right. Thank you.
Thanks.
Very good.
Thank you.
So I did have a question since we had all the building admins here. Of, and it kind of falls in line with the discipline piece is how is it going with the changes in the cell phone policy from their perspective? So I don't know if any of you guys want to speak to that of how it's going with the cell phone policy from you guys' perspective as a building leaders?
Are you just asking all of us?
Yeah.
Do you want us to come up there?
Oh, you can just stand up and say something or just sit down and say something.
I, I think it's been going great. We started at the beginning of the school year. Um, and when we're having those student orientation meetings, like that was one of the first things we covered. It was like, hey, here's the new, the new plan of cell phones. Um, it's been going really well. Like it's, one thing is just being consistent across all of our classrooms. But like generally, like students have been really receptive to it and they like appreciate the boundaries around it and stuff. And so like definitely been more engaged when putting the cell phones away. Like there's always some hiccups here and there and some challenges, but like those are conversations that we have and comes down to decision-making and stuff, so.
And at the high school, we've been coaching our kiddos that it's coming. It starts Monday when we get back, um, from Thanksgiving break. I did a parent square to families last week and I got a lot of positive comments from parents thanking us. So we'll see how it goes. I think it'll be, I think there'll be some bumps first couple of weeks, but we'll get through it.
Robert?
In the middle school, uh, this is going into our third year of actually do using the same, uh, policy that the district's adopted. Um, and each year has gotten better and this year, um, we have very little, uh, um, fight back from the kids on the policy and the expectations. They, they just accept it and know it and know that, um, they're going to get their phone back at the end of the day. Um, it's not an issue. It's no longer a battle.
At elementary, our school, it hasn't been a big issue, but, um, when they do put out on parent square, um, all of you have to pay attention. Yeah, it's just not a thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, Nicole and I sat in a cell phone at the, was the conference, we sat in a cell phone meeting that, um, I can't remember the district that was putting it on. Yeah, Ferndale was putting on that was, I, I was amazed because I walked in there saying, oh, no way, no way. This isn't a thing, but hearing it from the kids and the positive piece from the kids of how it's changed them was awesome. Um, just to hear kind of their perspective and how they were with it, so it's good. Look forward to results here. So, thanks, guys. We're going to move the five-minute recess to right now. And then we'll come back with Dan's budget update. So we will adjourn and be back here at eight-thirty.
Okay, good evening, board. I'm Dan King, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations here in North Mason. And I am presenting to you tonight our budget status report with our, uh, school district budget through the month of October. And that is the last complete full month of data we have, even though here we are close to December. So since we last, uh, met, since I last presented a budget status report at our last board meeting, I completed the, uh, year-end reporting, the financial report, the F-196. And, um, so, um, I did update this slide to reflect our beginning fund balance for FY-2526 because the year-end 24-5 fund balance is the FY-2526 beginning fund balance. So as you can see here, um, for the FY-2526 budget, we budgeted forty-two million, six hundred ninety-six sixty-two in revenues, forty-two million, three hundred eighty-two thousand, nine fifty-five in expenditures. The beginning fund balance, I have that asterisk there because, um, in the budget that was approved back in August, um, we anticipated or, or projected that our budgeted beginning fund balance for this fiscal year would be two million, two million, three hundred fifty thousand. And we ended up with a fund balance of two million, seven hundred eight thousand, eight eighty-seven. So that's our fund balance that's on the F-196. So, um, that's good news. We ended up with, uh, more in our fund balance than, than we had projected. So, um, we still have a lot of work to do, um, but, um, this is a positive sign. We have, um, budgeted for FY-2526 to end the year with two million, three hundred seventy-eight thousand, two ninety-eight. Of course, it's, it's a budget. It's not carved in stone. We do hope that, um, as we ended last fiscal year with a higher than budgeted fund balance, we also hope we'll end this fiscal year with a higher. Um, but we do have some challenges, um, as Dr. Michael, um, shared earlier, that, uh, we did not pass our levy. Now, the budget though was planned without those levy dollars included because we, you know, wanted to make sure we were, um, being very fiscally responsible. Yet I also have to mention that our enrollment came in about fifty-eight students lower than we had budgeted, which equates to eighteen thousand dollars per student or over a million dollars in, um, revenue loss. So we, um, do have to take that into consideration as we go forward into this fiscal year. Now, the next slide here, uh, it shows what our, uh, monthly revenues and expenditures have been so far, for our first two months of the fiscal year. So, um, you can see the difference in revenues between September and October. And you wonder, wow, how do we get, um, so much more, uh, in revenues in October? Well, the reason is we had a levy collection of one point two million dollars and, and some change. And we do anticipate about another five hundred fifty thousand in levy revenues. Basically, we're getting a half of a levy. The, our levy is, um, for this year, about one point eight million dollars, which is half of a full levy. So we, we've received, um, over one point two million to date, a little bit in September and most of it in October. We will receive and it will come in in kind of stages until hopefully we reach that full amount. And that's based on, um, property owners paying their, their levy, uh, their taxes, their property taxes, um, as we go forward. So, um, that huge increase though in October going to four million, eight hundred ninety thousand, six eighty-nine revenues is mostly because of the levy that we received. Our expenditures, uh, for the month of October were three million, six hundred four thousand, seven thirty. And then here I'm showing, uh, month by month, the revenues over expenditures or the difference between revenues and expenditures. Now, it's important to know, we're not a, a business, um, we're school district and our revenues come in mostly through our apportionment. And our apportionment is not equally distributed across the year. And also we have some seasons in which we record different amounts of revenues, like with the levy, with different, um, reimbursements coming from grants and that sort of thing. And so if we see that the revenues are less than the expenditures on every, any given month, it's not necessarily something to be alarmed by, but what we like to do is just kind of watch it and look for trends. So just wanted to put that out there, but I, I created this table so that we can just kind of see how this goes as we move through the year. In the next slide, it's a visual comparison. So it'll, each month, um, this will just grow. So we have the revenues, expenditures, and then revenues over expenditures. What we anticipate seeing because our, um, revenues are not consistent, um, for the reasons I just explained, but our expenditures though should be fairly consistent. We should see our expenditures being pretty level and actually our goal is to see them decreasing as we make adjustments to our, to our spending, um, because of the different, um, financial challenges that we are working through right now. So what we would like to see, our plan is to see the, the expenditures going down. Staying the same or going down. If they go up, we would not want to see them go up very much on any given month. So we'll be watching that as we go through the year end. Uh, I think this will be very helpful for y'all to get a big picture of where we're going with the budget. Uh, the next slide, um, this is cumulative. So the previous table showed how much we received in September and October for our revenues and expenditures. This is an accumulation. So you can see through October, we've received seven million, seven seventy-five, seven, five seventy-nine in revenues. Our expenditures were seven million, sixty-five, nine forty-two. You can see our fund balance change from two million, one fourteen, three seventy-four to three million, four eighteen, five twenty-four. And also what I added, which wasn't here last month, was the percentage of our fund balance, um, of our, of our budgeted expenditures. So our fund balance ended, uh, in October, we ended with our fund balance at just over eight percent. Uh, moving on to the next slide. Uh, this one is a visual general fund summary, um, where you can see in blue our year-to-date revenues in September and then October. Then in orange are year-to-date expenditures and in gray are month-end fund balance. And so again, just, just to kind of give us a visual, big picture of how things are progressing month by month through the year. And moving on to the next slide. We, besides our general fund, which we're, uh, we just went over, which is our main fund for our operational costs and teaching, uh, we have these four other funds. So our capital projects fund ended with a fund balance of one hundred thirty-four thousand, three sixty-three at the end of October. The debt service fund ended with a fund balance of three million, three fifty-six, four seventy-seven. Now, we're going to see that change in our next, when I give the next budget status report because we have a bond payment coming up. Also, you see that big, big difference, that big increase is because in October, we also received tax revenues in the debt service fund for our bond. Our ASB ended October with four hundred two thousand, one hundred ninety-nine and the transportation vehicle fund ended with three hundred fourteen thousand, eighty dollars. We're moving on to our enrollment summary. So our budget in enrollment, and this includes transition to kindergarten and our ALE and running start programs, uh, was two thousand, three thirty-one. Our November actual FTE is two thousand, two seventy-one point six two. And you can see the difference there, fifty-nine point three eight. There's a breakout for September, October, and November, so you can see at each, uh, level, um, how many students, uh, were counted. And, um, I think this is helpful too because if we see a decline, we can, or an increase, we can really see what level that, where it's coming from. And we can even, you know, go deeper with this and say, well, how many at Sand Hill versus Bell Fair Elementary? If, if you wanted that information. Or with ALE, ALE includes James Taylor and Home Link. And then the final slide just gives a visual showing in orange are budgeted FTE. And then, you know, September, we're not counting TTK and Running Start. We, those aren't, those programs, um, don't begin until October. And so that's why September's so low. And then you can see October and November, pretty consistent, barely the same now. Really a lot of, hardly any change right there. And then over on the far right in the green is our average. Now, the average does not include September because September's kind of a, kind of a anomaly without the Running Start and TTK. So, um, only including October forward for the average. So our average, uh, for the two months is, uh, two thousand, two seventy-one point eight eight. So if anyone asks you, how many students do we have enrolled in North Mason School District? You can say about two thousand, two hundred seventy students and you'll be pretty accurate. And, uh, next slide is just, do you have any questions?
No, good job, Dan.
Thank you, Dan.
You're welcome. Thank you.
That was very thorough. Thank you.
All right. Now we are moving down to the organizational performance and policy review. So moving into the monitoring reports, I'll entertain a motion to find the superintendent in compliance with ER-10 academic standard and practices.
I'm losing my mind. What am I looking at? Ten or thirteen?
Uh, ten.
Oh, I see it. Sorry, I'm... No, I don't see it. Where is it?
I moved that we find superintendent's performance to be in compliance with ER-10.
All right. Any discussion?
None for me.
Yeah, it's missing on yours.
It's missing on the one I'm looking at.
Are you, did you open up?
It's online.
Yeah, I have it on. I just opened the one online.
Did you open the package or did you open the?
No, I opened the one. This one says ER-13.
Yeah, I was just looking at mine.
Yeah. At home, it doesn't look like that. Okay. It'll go good. I'll figure it out.
All right. Any discussion?
I don't, I don't have any. I looked at that before. It's good.
All right. Uh, all in favor of finding the superintendent in compliance with ER-10 academic standards and practices signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye as well. All right. Onto the policy review. Is there any discussion for ER-13 mandatory policy review, policies? Any discussion there? Nick, early Anna?
None for me.
No.
Any question? All right. Uh, moving on to the closing here. So what do we got here? Uh, we need to adjust the schedule, um, for the December board meeting due to the holiday season. So where are we proposing here, moving it?
From the twenty-second to December eighth.
Oh, I know what.
Right. So we're going to move the board meeting. That's the board meeting, right? Okay. Uh, to December eighth at our regular scheduled time. And then we'll have a study session before. So all in favor of moving our next board meeting to December eighth?
Aye.
Is shortly signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
You said the eighth?
Eighth.
And what time would that study?
The study session would be at five-thirty.
To six-thirty?
To six-thirty and then the board meeting would be six-thirty.
Okay. It might be a little late to that, but I'll do my best.
I think we're, um, going to recap our
WASTA.
WASTA, the sessions that we went to so we can put you like towards that end.
Okay.
I think we
You good with that, Leanna?
I am, I am open to when you
I am, I am open to when you guys need me. I'm good.
Okay. Hold on.
I'm good.
So yes, yes, yes.
I'm making sure it's on my calendar.
Okay, I'm good. All right. That is moved to December eighth.
School board early meeting, six-thirty.
Any other public comments, Jackie?
No.
Okay. All right, on to the good of the order. We'll start down here with you today, Christine.
Yeah, I, I, um, shared those upcoming highlights, uh, with, uh, some additional opportunities for community involvement, um, through the ambassadors. Um, I'm looking forward to the first, uh, tree lighting as a Belfair resident, um, Sunday evening. Um, looking forward to handing out coffee and hot chocolate and all those good things, seeing Santa come into town and, you know, it's just always nice to see how different communities do different things. So, nope, we're excited to have our new student board member and, uh, I appreciate, um, that the board was willing to go to, to Wazda and attend sessions and do that learning together. I think that's really important. So thank you for doing that. I know everyone is very busy outside of life.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes. Um, so for me, I, I really appreciate going to Wazda. There was a lot of great information and we'll talk about that at the study session for a lot of that, but there's a lot of great meetings. Um, enjoyed being able to talk to some folks around the state, um, about some other stuff, um, out there and what their districts are doing. So it's always interesting. Pass that. I'm good. What you got?
Well, I wanted to congratulate the high school marching unit because they've been doing amazing things all over. Um, so that's really cool to see. Uh, and congrats to Kaden Intencio, who was voted Kitsapson's Reader's Choice Football Player of the Year. That was awesome, very awesome. Um, and want to say welcome to Grocery Outlet and Lucky Star. We have two new businesses in town and I have not, uh, been able to stop by Grocery Outlet, but it, parking lot looks full, so every time I drive past there. Um, so it's really nice to have some new businesses in here. And I wanted to say thank you to the citizens of North Mason for their levy work. Those people were amazing. They worked tirelessly. They did such an incredible job of explaining how funding for education works in our state and highlighting students or programs or groups or classes or achievements from our district. And, um, I'm so sorry that we could not go through, but I am so thankful and grateful to them for the however many hours, um, that they spent trying to, um, secure funding for our students and hopefully we'll, we'll get it next time.
Just two things that Dr. Michael and you said, again, it's, it's really nice to see Belfair expanding with, um, like the two new stores. Personally, I love Lucky Thrift. I think that they're awesome. And then the tree lighting is something I look forward to every year. It's exciting. Um, I'm excited to see the start of all the fall sports, especially girls and boys wrestling and where it leads off to, especially coming into the new season with past state placers. Um, oh, and then I'm also excited to see what happens with the cellphone policy and how students in the high school kind of react to that and how it, you know, affects them. So, yeah, it's a lot.
Well, I, um, the conference was, well, before the conference, I got to sit and, um, be, uh, listen at the Soup with the Soup. That was really cool. Um, I think that that will grow over time, that people catch on to that. That's a, a really good resource and I hope people watching too will, um, take advantage of that and come in because it's really, you leave it nice and open and listen and, um, offer a little bit of information. So that's really cool. Um, I want to thank Ms. Wells for coming and speaking at the beginning, uh, advocating for her daughter. That was really cool. And I know that's hard, especially as a parent with all the, the stuff going on. So I totally get that. Uh, make sure just in these next couple of days, um, the food banks in our pantry could really use anybody's support. Um, I've got a few families that were taking on with my group and, um, getting through that. And thank you to all the stores that are, um, donating to all of that. And, um, the tree lighting coming up, I'm hoping to make it, but God knows where I'm going to be at that moment. And, um, and I wanted to, um, show my support for the hub, that I know they're in a, kind of a transition time. Uh, so I know that they're usually our, um, our parade, uh, organizers and they've had some things going on, so they couldn't do it this year. So I know that sometimes we want to go, no, you know, like, why didn't you do it? You know, and just show their support and we look forward to the, to the next one. And anytime we want to, um, put our time into helping them, uh, they would most love that. And on the twenty-sixth, they're having a, um, Thanksgiving dinner. Uh, me and my son are going to be there helping out. And I'm excited. Um, our levy was so close, but that shows, um, support on both sides, um, for yes and no. And I think that we do have some work to do, but I'm excited to see what we do, uh, coming up. So, yeah.
Nick?
Yeah, mine are normally pretty lengthy, but you have all surmised things exceptionally well today and stolen my thunder on some of those. No, I, I love it. That means we're, uh, we've got a lot of commonalities on good things. The one thing I will just say is I've had a chance to interact with some, some, um, teachers slash parents, um, both sides of the spectrum where there's been instances that, um, be it passion, be it miscommunication, whatever it might be, but those times where a parent and a, um, teacher needed to come together for one reason or another. And I actually wanted to thank our, our counselors. Um, in each of the instances that I was able to discuss and talk about with people, those counselors came in and played a pivotal role in mediating, facilitating that situation and coming to, uh, I mean, you can't always come to a common understanding. You can't always come to a, a common happy ending, but both of them were, were, were resolved remarkably well and it was due to the efforts of our, our counselors. So just kudos to them.
Very good. Well, that being said, our next board meeting, we'll have a study session on the eighth and then a school board meeting to follow. Oh, wait, 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 wait. Leanna, you gotta do the self-assessment.
So it was my bad. I was looking at, I had thought I clicked on our agenda because this keeps turning off and I did October's agenda and so it was ten and not thirteen that I was looking at. And I also thought you were doing this and I was like, why do we have this? Because it was on, it was like, ah, I'm on? So, um, let's see, we have, we have four of us, right? And not five of us because Rick's not here yet. Okay.
Yep.
All right, so I'm going to add that in there. Okay, well, our first part here is to rate the board's, uh, meeting behavior as satisfactory or not satisfactory in our general, general meeting behavior. And because you're brand new and have never heard this, I'm going to make you sit through it. Uh, the agenda was well planned to focus on the real work of the board. The board followed its agenda and did not allow itself to get sidetracked. Board members prepared for and contributed to the meeting. The meeting proceeded without interruptions or distractions. The board's deliberations and decision-making process were public. Participation was balanced. All participated. No one dominated. Uh, members listened attentively, avoiding side conversations. Uh, work was conducted in an atmosphere of trust and openness and meeting participants treated each other with respect and courtesy. And I gave us a satisfactory on those. And, uh, these next ones here are board, uh, our governance principle review. And the board actions occur at the policy level rather than at the operational level. The board reviews policy about each topic before discussing that issue. In writing additional policies, the board starts with a broad statement and becomes more detailed in a logical and disciplined sequence. We usually NA this unless we are writing a new policy. Um, and then the board minimizes time spent monitoring past performance. The board routinely dedicates time to reviewing or improving its own process. The board clarifies, uh, priorities and values when considering potential outcomes beneficiaries and costs of outcomes. And the board follows an annual calendar based on a plan for doing its work. The board chair helps the board efficiently conduct its meeting. And the board spends most of its time deliberating issues, defining and clarifying its vision and linking with its community as opposed to fixing things. And the board supports the superintendent in any reasonable interpretation of its policies. And besides the NA one, I give us a satisfactory yes on all of those. So overall, I'm giving us satisfactory.
Very good. Okay, now our next board meeting is on the eighth. Study session at five-thirty, regular board, scheduled board meeting at six-thirty. So the meeting is adjourned.